Hello, everyone. Welcome to our Women Who Changed Westford podcast, where we will be interviewing women who have served on the Select Board over the course of Westford's history. We are Capstone students from Westford Academy, working with the Westford Museum and Historical Society to put together this program in collaboration with the Westford Cat. My name is Deepa Gotam.
I'm Alita Kuleva.
And I'm Louis Casal.
Today, we'll be chatting with Ms. Ellen Hardy. She served two years on the Select Board and was the first woman on the Board of Selectmen. Thank you for joining us today, Mrs. Hardy.
My pleasure.
Um, we wanted to ask you, like, starting off, what brought you to Westford?
My husband had just finished graduate school, and I was just a year out of college. And so we were moving out from Boston. And to be perfectly honest, we drove until we found a place that we could afford.
What is your favorite Westford village? You might not be able to tell us, but, you know.
Favorite Westford village? Oh, that really is very, very hard, isn't it? Um, I think Forge Village comes first. Uh, you know, that mill is just extraordinary beautiful. And we're so lucky that Chris Yule helped, did not help us save it, he saved it. That it's as beautiful as it is. So I, I think in just the history, it's gotta be Forge, followed by Parker Village, because I love the little Parker Village schoolhouse and the program for third graders there.
Um, we know that you're the owner of Muffins on Main, so we were just wondering.
I own the building.
The building.
I'm the landlady. Pam, the baker. Owns the shop. Go ahead.
What is your favorite item on the menu?
Cranberry bog.
Cranberry bog.
You know, I go in and I have my pick of the litter, and I just always go to the bog, unless it's tea time, and then it's the brownie cookie. So those are my two favorites. And I've just been introduced to chai. I'd never had chai before. And Pam started selling that made by a young Indian woman who came to this country and could not find chai half as good, as when she'd grown up with India. So, um, I love Nancy's chai as well. Thanks.
And what is something about you that you think people would be surprised to know? Or that most people may not know?
I have two sons. And that I'm, and that I'm very happily married to Mike Hardy, whom I've been married to for 62 years. And because I was so involved in government and the town from the time that I got here, I think a whole lot of people figured I was widowed or divorced. And Mike is a very quiet, wonderful man. And he was working in Boston, so he wasn't part of the community. He is now, he's very involved in the Museum and Historical Society for a while, and now with the Paris Center for the Arts. So I think that I do have a, that I have a family. And two grandchildren, actually. My granddaughter Emily graduated from Westford Academy in 2017. Her twin did not, so probably that's a secret to many people.
What was it like, this is kind of like random, but what was it like, uh, I think, winning the Person of the Year, Roden, uh, the Roden Bush Person of the Year Award in 92? Am I right?
Oh, that was, that was really very touching. Um, yeah. It, that's the one that was done at the Nabnassett Country Club, I believe. Um, I've gotten a couple, so they sort of get mixed up. Because I think the one that was the Roden Bush, um, one was, in fact, a little bit later. But the one that I really remember a lot was the one that was done down at the Nabnassett Country Club. And they picked me up in a limo at my house. And I'd never been picked up in a limo. And it was a serious limo, you know, with it had not much drinking between our house and Nabnassett. But it was just very nice, and a lot of people made some lovely tributes. And, um, at that point, I was up to my eyeballs in the Recycling Commission, which I helped start back in the 1980s. And someone gave me this sweet drawing that says, "The Westford Trash Watchdog." And it sort of has me as a dog looking at somebody's trash can picture. Sure, and that hangs in my office. So that was a great honor. It was lovely. Thanks.
Um, can you tell us a little bit more about your commission work?
With the Recycling Commission?
Or just, uh, because you've served on multiple commissions?
Yeah, I think that I, that I have done. I was on the Personnel Board for a long time, but that's sort of boring clerical kind of stuff. But the Roden Bush Community Center was the first thing I got involved in. It was at the same time I was on the Board of Selectmen, sort of 72 to 74. And that was, um, a middle school. And, um, just used as an overflow for Westford Academy, which was then at the abbey. They hadn't built this abbey, the Patton Road Building yet, that opened in the fall of 73. So a bunch of us wondered what would happen to the Roden Bush. And we wanted it to be a community center. The Select Board said nobody would ever come to it. Uh, so we got the Lowell YWCA to rent it from the town for three years, and we were the branch of the YW. And that gave us a chance to start a preschool and classes and health clinics and all the things we wanted to have there. And then I was very involved with the Roden Bush for the next 20 years or so. So that was a fun committee that I served on, the Roden Bush Committee. And then in 85, the town's dump was gonna close, and so what were we gonna do with all our trash? And, uh, we were gonna truck it to an incinerator in Haverhill, where we would pay by the ton. So a group of us thought, well, why to pay to burn recyclables? Why don't we take those out first and then just send the trash up? So we started a recycling program that was just newspapers, which is the greatest. It's not now, because people don't read newspapers. But in 85, most people got at least two newspapers a day, the morning paper and the Lowell Sun in the afternoon. It was a lot of weight that went out. So we started with just newspapers, collecting that, and we got paid for the paper. It was really a wonderful venture. And eventually, the town got to the process that they did it at Curbside. And, uh, I served on that commission until, uh, five years ago. So I was on it for a long time. And it's a challenge to try and get 8,500 households to understand the rules. It's impossible, actually. But it's, it's, you know, they send out a little calendar with all the rules once a year and have workshops on how to compost, and it's a wonderful. It's, it was my favorite board ever to be on, because everybody who's on it, feels so passionately about, you know, the environment and sustainability and, um, give their heart and soul to that. So I think those were the two commissions I was on that I enjoyed the most.
Was politics something and local government always something you were interested in? Or what got you interested?
Well, I, you know, student government, I was usually involved in, you know. I think in eighth grade, I was on whatever ran the public school I was in. Um, and in high school, I was. And actually, in college, I served as the president of my dorm. But, you know, I, I never saw it as politics. I saw it as, how do you get a group of people who are living together, whether it's the same town or the same dormitory? You know, to just figure out what the rules are gonna be. That's really what government is, is how do we govern our behavior? And how do we do it mutually? Not from the top down, but from the bottom up. So for that reason, I majored in government in college at Boston University. And, um, when I came to Westford, just, I was only a year out of college when Mike and I moved here, how town government worked. And I knew about open town meeting, because my family had moved to a small town in New England, in Massachusetts, when I was in eighth grade. So my father had been on the school committee, and they had town meeting. And a very good friend of my parents was, was the moderator. So I knew how it worked, and I just stepped right in in Westford and wanted to be a part of it in, in this town as well. So I sort of fell into it by both of those ways.
Uh, where, where did you grow up? Where'd you go to high school?
Um, I went to high school at Concord Academy in Concord, Massachusetts. My family at that point was living in Lincoln. I would have been very happy at the Lincoln Suburry Regional High School, but, you know, my parents told me I was going to Concord Academy, and I said, fine with me. I knew nothing about it. We'd only lived up here for a year. It was a wonderful school. I was a day student, so I got the best of all possible worlds to be there. And before that, I'd lived all over the country, because my father was a mining engineer, as in the person who goes down into the mine with the miners and tells, shows them where to find the lead when we lived in Missouri. What were the mines? Up at Edwards, New York? And then my father came down to be an executive in New York City, so he lived in the burbs. So it was a fun way to get an education. I learned, uh, I learned a lot about a lot of people growing up, because I lived in very. I think the town in northern New York had a population of, I think Mom told me, there were only about 400 people there. And they were all worked in the mines, you know? And that was very different than Rye, New York, which is where we went after that. So it was a, an education out of school as well as in school.
What inspired you to major in government in particular?
Well, I think that the experience that I'd had in, uh, in my freshman year at college, I started at Northwestern University in, in Illinois, where I did run for President of the Dormitory. And, um, that idea of getting people to sit down together and write the rules, which I realized that's, that's what, well, I was gonna major in History of Religion at that particular point in time, but the idea of government stuck after my freshman year, and I became a government major after that.
Did having like a father that was like a mining engineer inspire you in any way?
You know, I don't think it did. Certainly, I didn't think about becoming a geologist or an engineer. No, that, uh, I was intrigued by what Daddy did, but it certainly wasn't anything I ever wanted to follow in his footsteps. I had no goal for a profession. I mean, I never thought I'd go to law school or I'd become a doctor. I sort of just followed the flow. But I did find that I was very good at, um, I'm good at coming up with an idea like, let's recycle. And I've got this sort of Tom Sawyer quality that I can make other people think that standing in a parking lot on a Saturday stacking newspapers would be a great way to spend their time. And somehow, we're able to have a lot of fun doing things like that. I mean, if you just sort of make it a game and have a sense of humor, people will do wonderful things. So that's when I took that quality and decided, and that's, that's government. You know, bringing people together. Yeah.
Can you, uh, tell us about the books you've written on the history of Westford?
Well, I've sort of followed in other people's footsteps on all of those. I think the first book that was, uh, like, see if I can remember the chronology. Well, when the town of Westford turned 250 years old, it was a tough time in government. The town was divided about how we should grow in terms of commercial, if there should be, how the zoning should be. So we were a little, there was a little bit of a rift. So the League of Women Voters, again, wanted to pull some people together. So we thought if we looked at the town's history, the villages, the people who'd come here to work at the mills, if people understood what we had in common in our past, it would give us a path through our future. So we put together basically a video. It was slides and a tape cassette, but in, in the 1970s. And it was called Westford: A Sense of Community. A decade later, Arcadia Publishing approached the League and asked if they could make that into a book. So that was my first published book, because I wrote the text for that. And then my friend Emily Teller found an 1899 photo album of Westford photographs in a bookstore in Concord. And I ran over and bought it, and I thought it'd be fun to re-photograph, you know, what did those same places look like 100 years later? So that was my little book Photographs that I did. Westford, Old Houses of Westford had been done in the 1950s by the Daughters of the American Revolution, which still exists in Westford. There still is a Colonel John Robinson, D.A.R., chapter. And two sisters, Gertrude and Julia Fletcher, whose father ran the general store where Muffins on Main is, took their aunt's photographs from the 1920s and re-photographed them all in the 1950s and gave that as a gift to the J.B. Fletcher Library in 1955, 56. It's a great book. So 30 years later, historian Marilyn Day and I thought, wouldn't it be fun to do it again? Go back and re-photograph, tell who's lived there in the intervening years? So we did new Old Houses of Westford. We've changed that just to Old Houses of Westford, updated. Um, and we keep that updated now, you know, J.I.T. Every time a house sells, we can just redo that page, and we don't have to reprint. So that was fun. And then I wrote the history of Cinder the Fire Dog. Do you know about Cinder the Fire Dog?
No.
You should have brought a copy. It's very small. But Cinder was a real honest, goodness dog, found down by the, uh, Jack Walsh Ballfield, by the, uh, dog officer, mostly dalmatian. So he thought she looked like a fire dog. So she took her up to, he took the dog up to the fire station, which was then in Westford Center. And, um, she became the mascot for, and she was just, she wouldn't, she was devoted. She was, she had 14, you know, friends. It was an all-call fire department at that point in time. And, uh, Cinder had to be put to sleep the week of September 11th. So that was a tough week in Westford. We lost two Westford residents in the towers, and, and Cinder had to be put to sleep. So after that, I thought it'd be sweet for people to know about Cinder. So I got my friend Johnny Walker Rose to do some beautiful, sweet illustrations. And, uh, I think they have copies of it at the museum. There aren't a lot of them still. It was not a big seller, because I gave them away. But Cinder the Fire Dog is, was a fun book to put together.
It sounds like you've like, almost become so connected to like the town of Westford and its history, like writing books and stuff like that. Um, looking back, like, I'm just curious, what were some changes that you wanted to be made in town? Like, while on the Select Board, that kind of?
It was basically openness. We didn't even have a newspaper, well, we don't have a newspaper, again, we have Westford Cat, but there was no Westford Eagle. So how are the voters supposed to know what the selectmen are doing? And that's all it was, really. I wanted, and, again, the Select Board being covert, it just wasn't important to that group, which was only three men when I ran, and it expanded to five, to let people know. The League of Women Voters had a wonderful group called the Observer Corps, of members who went to the meetings and had notes. And, and I wanted to continue that on a broader scale, so that the voters knew how their money was being spent, how they could have a voice in it. So that was what motivated me. Yeah.
I know you majored in town government, and I know, like, in the 70s, was it, did you have like difficulties and kind of, like, I guess, having leadership positions? Like, was it, like, different at the time?
Well, you know, again, I, I gave so little thought to the fact that I was female, because I wasn't making a protest. I was never a women's libra. I, I, you know, that, that was not where I was at that point in my life. And I'm trying to think how many women, there were some strong women who were in, in, um, on the school committee. It's interesting. State law allowed women to be on the school committee in the 19th century. They couldn't vote at town meeting, but they could be on the school committee. So there were already women who were there. It was a smaller town, you know, we were only about, how many were we? Maybe about, well, we did the slide tape show, a town of 14,000 people living throughout 32 square miles. That's how the slide tape starts. So, and now we're 25,000 people. So it was simpler to govern then. But, and, and women, I can't really remember if there, how many women there were on other town boards and committees, but it wasn't something that I was counting. What I cared about was whoever was there, were they doing the job in a way that represented the voters who'd voted for them? And even the residents who live here who chose not to vote, they still count as much. Yeah.
I know you mentioned, um, briefly before that, when you were on the board, it was actually called the, um, Board of Selectmen.
It was.
And I know it's since changed to the Board of Select, the Select Board. Sorry about that.
No, no.
Um, and I'm wondering, like, what does that, um, can you tell us a little bit about that name change and what it meant to you?
Well, that happened much later. That's happened within the last decade.
Yeah.
And certainly from 1972, when I was elected, up until the change, as you well know, there were almost a dozen women who served. So it was no longer the Board of Selectmen. And people asked me if that, you know, made me angry that I was a selectman. No, I've got other fish to fry. So when it happened 10 years ago, it sort of seemed the reasonable thing. It was not controversial at town meeting at all. It was just an idea whose time had come. And I notice as I look around the Commonwealth, more and more towns now have select boards rather than boards of select men. It was just something that we had to catch up with history.
So you joined the town, right, as the League of Women Voters, uh, was up and running, right?
Yes, they started in May of, uh, really the same month that Mike and I moved to town. We bought our house in April, and I think they started in April of, of 1967.
Uh, were you a part of the League of Women Voters?
I, I received a phone call soon after we got here, asking me if I would attend a meeting for the newly formed League of Women Voters. And I knew about that, because there had been a league in Lincoln where my family had lived. I don't think Mommy was a member. Isn't that interesting? I don't think she was, but I certainly knew of it. So I said, sure. It was also a great way to meet other women in Westford when you just moved to town. There was no women's club. Well, there was. There was the Tadma Club, um, but they were all my grandmother's age. So to meet people who were my contemporaries, who had interest in government, as I did, the League was a gift. So it was a great way to meet people, and we did an extraordinary amount, because we not only studied things at the local level, we studied state issues, education, um, welfare reform, prison systems, and we had national studies, China, you know? So it was like going back to college. It was a great learning tool and a great social tool. Some of my dearest friends still, I met in the League 50 years ago.
And what's that like? Do you, do you all just like meet in one, um, one room and just like talk?
No, basically, there are two purposes of the League of Women Voters. The first is voter education. That's why it was begun. The women got the vote in 1922, and a group of women, suffragettes, who'd been working for that all their lives, said, okay, now women have the vote, how do they know what to do with it? And the League of Women Voters was created to do that, to get women together, to teach them about involvement in government. They'd always been the power behind the throne, but we won't go there. And then the other element was to be well-educated on issues, so that when state legislatures and the Congress had an issue before them, the League as a body would, quote, "have a position." So local League study, things like China, literally, take a position on, the, the issues were different 50 years ago, but what the relationship between the United States and China should be. In this day and age, it's probably the tariffs. And then when Congress was acting on that, members of the League of Women Voters could go to their Congresswoman and say, "The League of Women Voters' position on this is..." And so we would have studied it. And unless the League has held a study and taken a vote, we can't take a position. Again, it's grassroots. So it has two purposes, educating people how to be a voter and educating the, um, our representatives about what the League members feel is important.
And, uh, so is it like, there are like different sectors that like focus on different issues?
Exactly. Yep, they're called units. And so, you know, when the League gets together for its annual meeting, they decide which issues they will study the next year. Maybe it'll be the Westward Public Schools and, uh, whether the calendar should be changed. And then a group of people will sign up to be on that study committee, and that group of 12 will go off and work on that for the year. Someone else will decide to work at a state level. So the membership, and it changes every year. So there's only one annual meeting, and aside from that, throughout the year, there are these study committees that are going on. So Westford has a League of Women Voters. They're, the number of Leagues is reducing, because many more women are working full-time than they were 50 years ago. We had, the, many of us were stay-at-home mothers. But it's still a powerful force and a very, very impressive group. It's men and women, even though it's still called the League of Women Voters. I guess it should be like the Select Board, more generic. But its history is almost more important than the Select Board, that it did start as a group to make women voters an informed group of voters.
Oh, sorry. Did the League of Women Voters, like, being a member, um, like, inspire, inspire you to run for the Select Board and like try to make everything more transparent for everyone?
I think the two things were on parallel tracks. You know, the, the League, I so supported its mission to have, um, educate the voters, and at the same time, the Selecting was just another way to do that. So I think they were the same thought. I don't think one necessarily made the other.
Um, if you had to give advice to any young people or young woman looking to get involved in their government, what would you say?
Well, just find whatever it is, whether it's something that's making you angry, you know, that darn it, why don't they, there is no they. I think that's the advice I would give you. The they is you. And if you say, I don't know why they do this, and I don't know why they don't make this happen, step into that pool and get your feet wet and become part of the we. And, um, it can be the smallest thing in the world. Like, what time the bus picks you up in the morning? I don't care, but just get involved in the process and see how it works. And you will be astounded what a different one voice can make in something like that. So pick any subject matter, whether I agree with you or not, something you're passionate about, and, uh, put your foot, put your toe in, you know?
Uh, you might have already stated this, but, uh, where in Westford, or, uh, do the League of Women Voters meet, or is it multiple places?
Yeah, very often they meet here. Monthly, they have a, at the Westford Cat. Um, it's called a civic social. It's, uh, it's not taped, so that people can say whatever they want, but they invite different people to be the guests every year, week, every month. Uh, last month, it was Jeff Morissette, who is the Director of Land Use and Planning, the Assistant Town Manager for that. So usually, it's people who are in town government who have, um, positions. They do a candidate's night every year for both public, uh, town elections and others. And those are either held down at the Millennium School, because that's access to cable. So those, and sometimes they meet at, well, we don't have the J.B. Fletcher Library right now for two years, but when the J.B. Fletcher Library comes back with even a fancier meeting room, they will meet there, but they're, and when we began, the units were all held in people's homes. It was in, and we provided babysitting, because we all had little kids. But now it tends to be in public buildings for public events.
Just out of curiosity, like, what are some things you are involved in today? Like, some committees or like issues that you're passionate about? Like, after your term on the Select Board, too?
Well, most recently in my life, for the last two years, was to purchase, we created a nonprofit, a not-for-profit housing group called The Drew Farmhouse, Inc. And we bought the old Caldwell Banker farmhouse and barn that's right at Boston Road. And it was empty. Caldwell Banker had moved out during COVID and realized they didn't need an office anymore. Agents could work from home. So the building was put on the market, and like everyone else in Westford, I drove by every day and thought, what's gonna happen to that? And my husband and I had bought the Muffins on Main building eight years before. It has five apartments in it. And Muffins on Main.
Yeah.
And we had thought, well, why couldn't we do that, not, not the Muffins on Main? But make it, and it's pretty affordable, just because we inherited that from the previous owner. He had people in there who don't pay a lot, because they don't have a lot of money. And Westford needs that desperately. We just have gotten too expensive for people to stay here. So it wasn't gonna be a lot, but we said, if we buy the building, we can partner with the town, which has what's called community preservation money, can only be spent for affordable housing, historical preservation, and open space. So we went to the fall, we bought the building, we got the funding from, from friends in the bank. Went to the town meeting and asked for money for the affordable housing and historic preservation pies, so from the outside, the building will always look the same. But as of today, in May of 2025, there are five apartments in the farmhouse. Four are lived in as of last week. Um, the fifth, where I think we have a, uh, someone to live there, we met with her yesterday. And then the exciting thing was that, totally unsolicited by us, Habitat for Humanity of Greater Lowell, which has their offices in Westford, asked what we were up to, and I showed them the farmhouse and the barn and said, when we had the resources, we'd love to turn the barn into housing as well. And the director said, well, what habitat did the barn, and you do the apartments in the farmhouse? And that's what's happening. So volunteers come every Tuesday, Thursday, and it's basically gonna be a duplex, three-bedroom home on the first floor, three-bedroom floor on the second floor. From the outside, it will look like a barn. All of this is on the other side of the wall. And two Habitat families will be chosen to live there, uh, this fall. And I hope we'll be in by Christmas of 2025. So that has consumed my life. I'm president of that Board of Directors. And we're all volunteers. We have no staff. So we have been clerk of the works, uh, project, project managers, and now we are landlords and property managers, uh, for the three women who are running that. And, uh, that's been the most recent fun bite that I decided to chew.
That's awesome.
Great.
Do you kind of, like, how, what inspires you to kind of, um, choose things to focus on, like, over the years?
Well, you know, the, the one for the housing came about inadvertently, because we bought the Muffins on Main building. And that was sort of selfish. It's across the street from our home. And I didn't want it torn down, because it was built in 1837 as a general store with an apartment over the store. And I wanted that history to remain. You may have noticed I care about Westford history. So we bought the building for selfish reasons, but we inherited these five apartments and realized, because we get so many phone calls from people saying, I understand you have an apartment. I don't have any place to live, that there's just not enough of that. So that's how the housing. So that's how the housing, it was a world I knew nothing about, especially public housing and funding. It's always fun to learn something new, you know? Some of what I've learned, I wish I didn't know, because it really needs to be fixed, how we fund public housing. And that's actually our board's next project. We've been working with our state rep, Jim RCero, who just stepped down as chair of the State Housing Committee, because what people who need housing and don't have a lot of money need to go through is humiliating. A twenty-five-page application just isn't what they need right now, thank you very much. They need a hand, but they don't need a pile of paper. And the people who are working with them are so well-intentioned and wanted, but it's just too bureaucratic. It should be much simpler. So we are really a small fish in this pond, but we hope that we can get that changed a little bit. Very specifically, for what's called workforce affordable housing, you know, people who've got jobs, but they still can't afford to live in Westford. So it's not low-income housing, it's middle-income housing. That's really hard to do. That's what we wanted to do at the farmhouse, and we've been unable to do. So that's, I think, my next campaign, is to just work on that for the next couple of years and see if we can do that. So, and the recycling just seemed to make sense. That was financial. Why spend fifty dollars a ton to burn newspapers when you can collect them and get fifty dollars a ton, you know? And some of them were just silly. I don't know. The Common Restoration was because I adored Gordon Seavey. And when he said, I think we should clean up the Common, I said, I'd love to work with you on that. So they've all had different origins.
It's so interesting that actually Muffins on Main, like in that same building, there are apartments for other people. I feel like something people should know, yeah.
Yeah, there are five of them. And, you know, it's been, it's been really, that ten years has been amazing. I've never been a landlady before, and I know lots of people don't like being landladies. But the people we've had living there are just wonderful. And, you know, having Pam have Muffins on Main there has been a joy for us, because my husband and I help her with the, you know, she loves the baking, but she doesn't necessarily like balancing the checkbook. And I'd rather her be baking, anyway. So we've been extraordinarily lucky. I mean, when we drove out into this town in the spring of nineteen sixty-seven, if you told me how incredible our life here would have been and how lucky we would be, I wouldn't have believed you.
So sweet. I know, sorry, this is just one last question out of curiosity. How did the idea for Muffins on Main come about?
Well, Pam was the baker at Kimball Farms. And she had been doing that for eight years, and she loved it, was very good at it. And she was our next-door neighbor. So she lived in the house where Gertrude and Julia Fletcher lived. They weren't there anymore. But, so Pam lived next door, so we'd known her for about seven or eight years. And she had said to us, you know, I loved baking at Kimball's, but wouldn't it be fun to have my own store, where I could do whatever I wanted, you know? And jokingly, Mike and Pam and I would say, well, wouldn't that be handy to have it across the street, which was then a little clothing store called Fashion Truck on Main? And by gum, up went the for-sale sign. But the fashion truck was still there, but her lease was expiring in that October of twenty, we must be in fifteen by now, twenty fifteen. So then the young gal who had that lease said, I'm not renewing my lease. So we were buying a building with nothing in the store. And in the fifty years we'd been in town, so many little stores had been there. There'd been a chocolate shop, there'd been a gift shop, there'd been a, oh lordy, a florist, Sweet Peas was there for a long time. But nothing's really stuck. And my husband Mike said, well, it has to be food. People always come back for food. And I said, well, Pam said she wants to do muffins. Shall we see if she could open a muffin shop? And we walked across the bridge of our pond to her house and said, what do you think about Muffins on Main? And literally, within five minutes, she said yes. We had no idea how we would do it. We didn't know if we could put a kitchen in there, nothing. But she prevailed, and she opened in December, eight and a half years ago. And it's been magic.
So I think we're gonna wrap this interview up.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
I can't thank you enough. Nobody else would have the patience to sit down and listen to you ramble for forty minutes. So thank you. Cut out a lot. And I hope you've learned a lot in the eleven women that you've interviewed, because this town is really rich, and each one of us brings something so different to the Board of Selectmen, and then what they've done both before and after their times on the Board of Selectmen. So I thank you for delving into that, and I really look forward to seeing the finished product. That will be really fun.
Thank you so much.
All right, great. You all, take care.